Welcome, everyone, to the April 14 City Council Work Session. I'm going to sort of break our usual pattern and just very quickly tell you that this morning, I got to go to the sneak peek of Wicked that's coming like in a year. And they're starting to sell, I mean, they had some of the singers from the performance there this morning, and it was quite wonderful. And if you want to buy season tickets, now, this is like an advertisement for a cultural so, but I'm just telling you, I think these things are going to sell so fast. They're selling blocks to people, and they're selling season tickets right now. So, just wanted to let you know that if you're interested, it's a good time to move on it right now.
Yeah, it's going to be wonderful.
It's so wonderful.
Thank you.
And also wanted to just pull this up one more time and remind people to turn in their census forms. This is, this is the end of the time for getting that in, and it really makes a difference for the services we can provide in our community and the funds that come into our community. So, just one more pitch out there to, for everyone to please get their census forms in. Okay. With that, we're going to go into our first work session item. And I know that Mike and Andrea have been on the, what's it called?
Steering committee.
Steering Committee, working on this issue. And I just really felt that it was time we got up to speed on this. I'm really glad, I think you started moving out at the same time that I was thinking, we better, we better start all kind of getting in gear here and, and understand what's been going on. So, because I'd hate for them to get to the place where the decision making is, and then we all, none of us have caught up with it. So, city manager.
Thanks, Mayor. And Chris Henry is our project manager out of Public Works, but I will turn it over to Savannah Crawford from ODOT who will be making the presentation.
That's right.
Welcome, Savannah.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. My name's Savannah Crawford. I am the Area 5 Planner for ODOT. I am the project manager and planner for the Beltline Facility Plan. So, I'll go over the progress to date, talk about some of the alternatives that we are evaluating at this time, and of course, open it up for any questions throughout the presentation. So, this is the Beltline Facility Plan. It's from River Road to Coburg Road. What we are looking at is a 20-year facility plan for the Beltline Highway for this segment. When I say 20 years, it means that we're looking out to 2031 for potential improvements to the Beltline Highway. We want future improvements to last us at least 20 years, if not longer. So, what we've done, we started this process approximately two years ago. The beginning phases, we started looking at existing and future conditions analysis, looking at what the facility looks like today, what the facility will look like in 20 years if nothing is done. We've also gone through a problem identification. Geometry, of course, is an issue on the Beltline Facility. There's also a lot of traffic congestion on the facility as well, and I don't think that I need to tell you the problems, but just so you know. We've also identified alternatives and some potential solutions for the Beltline Highway. At this point in time, those are long-range solutions, again, those 20-year solutions for the Beltline Highway. We're currently in the process of evaluating them, and ultimately, we'll narrow them down to a range that we can take into the environmental process, which is called NEPA, and that's the National Environmental Policy Act. We hope to take about three to five concepts, and we have about 10 right now. We've also had public involvement throughout the last two years. We started off with stakeholder interviews. I think Mayor Piercy, you were one of those actually at the beginning, where we asked some questions regarding the problems on, on the facility. What would you like to see happen to the facility over the next 20 years? We've also held four community forums. These were open houses that have been held at various locations throughout the community, specifically around the Beltline Facility. The first two were in relation to the existing conditions, what do you see as the problems on the facility? The third one was in relation to solution identification. So, we wanted to hear from the community on what kind of solutions they wanted to see occur on the Beltline. And then, the last one we held on March 16th, that was bringing the 10 concepts out to the public for their feedback. We also have three project committees. We have a project management team, which is our staff group. That is, City of Eugene staff, Lane County staff, ODOT staff, LCOG and LTD are all involved in the project management team. And we look over the deliverables and the documentation and make a recommendation to our Stakeholder Advisory Committee. The Stakeholder Advisory Committee is our citizen group. There's a variety of different representatives on that. They've been a great help for this process. We really appreciate our Stakeholder Advisory Committee, and they ultimately will make recommendations to our Steering Committee, which is the decision-making body for our Beltline Facility Plan. And as Mayor Piercy stated earlier, we do have Counselor Clark and Counselor Ortiz from the City of Eugene on that Steering Committee. We also have two Lane County Commissioners, Commissioner Fleener and Commissioner Handy. We also have two ODOT representatives, my boss, Eric Havick, who's the Planning Manager, as well as Sunny Chikarin, the Area 5 Manager for ODOT. Those are the six bodies that make up that, that group. So, what we've done so far is we've identified a range of concept. Again, this is 10 concepts. There's a wide range of them that I'll show you here shortly. We will be, we have evaluated those based off of some evaluation criteria, which I do believe is in your packet. We've come up with that evaluation criteria through our Stakeholder Advisory Committee or Project Management Team, as well as our Steering Committee. So, they have all bought off on that evaluation criteria. We are currently in the process of trying to narrow that, those range of 10 concepts down to a manageable amount that we can take into the NEPA process. The NEPA process is very expensive, so we want to make sure that we take forward the ones that we really want to seriously consider for the Beltline. Just so you, here's just an outline of the evaluation criteria. Again, it is in your packet, so if you have further questions, let me know. There is a wide range of concepts that we've looked at. We've looked at, of course, the no-build, do-nothing on the facility is always an option. We've also looked at some lower-cost, lower-footprint type options such as TDM, TSM. And what that is, is Transportation Demand Management and Transportation System Management. So, how can you operate the system more efficiently? What kind of demand techniques can you use to reduce the demand on the Beltline Highway? We also have some low-build footprint type options, which are very minor improvements, such as extending ramps, just to get some of the traffic off of the facility a little sooner. And I'll, I'll show you the maps shortly. And then, of course, we have the higher-cost, larger footprints. These are the options that do, of course, improve a lot of the safety operations on the facility and do have longevity to them as well. But again, they are higher cost and larger footprint. So, just to start off on the 10 concepts that I'll be going through, the first was the Transportation Demand Management and Transportation System Management. So, looking at several different techniques to reduce the demand on the facility. What we have found, we've done some analysis to increase the bike ped mode within our analysis, as well as the transit mode, to see if increased bike ped, increased transit would also help reduce the demand. What we found is that it does reduce the demand on the facility by about 5% over the next 20 years. However, we are 40% over capacity in 20 years. So, it does help. What we are looking at is including these types of techniques in all of the alternatives. But standalone, we're finding that it really isn't going to solve the overall problems on the Beltline Highway. So, this is the first concept. It might be a little bit difficult to see. There's three different colors, so this is really three concepts in one. You'll see there's a little bit of red, and I don't have a pointer, so I apologize. But you'll see that there's a little bit of red going westbound to Delta, and then eastbound on Delta as well. Excuse me.
Pointer in that.
Is this a pointer?
Just the mouse itself.
Somewhere.
On the screen.
Push pointer.
Oops. Oops.
There you go.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay, okay. Yeah. There you go. Oh, perfect. I get, it's not a red pointer, it's a pointer pointer. I get it. So, thank you.
The other kind of pointer.
Other pointer. Okay.
This is the third kind.
Right, the finger. So, right here, this is low build concept one. Oh, gosh, now I'm going to really go back here.
Yeah, just don't push the buttons.
All right. Sorry about this. Obviously, not familiar with the pointer.
Previous.
Previous? Previous?
Scroll.
I know, I really went for, okay. Sorry about that. So, what you see here.
Not a good pointer.
Okay. I will try to make it work, so bear with me. I know we, we have an hour, so I'll try to be quick as much as possible.
Try to move past the slide of the hour.
So, yeah, right here. So, there is the red. So, as you can see, going eastbound, we'd be extending that ramp. As well as going westbound, we'd be extending the ramp over here. That would be low build concept one. So, really, the most minimal improvement that we could do to the facility, we wanted to see what that looked like. In terms of congestion, in terms of mobility, it really doesn't help. It does improve some of the safety operations, just because it removes traffic a little sooner off of the Beltline. But overall, it really doesn't quite get us where we need to be. Then, you can see the blue. There's a little bit of blue here, some blue here. So, low build concept two would be the red and the blue combined. So, we'd be making these improvements. The blue shows that this ramp will actually be reconfigured slightly, just to allow for more time for vehicles within the angle. Yes, the turning angle, thank you. I have an engineer here that can step in, and let me use the right terminology here. I'm just a planner. And then, you would also have this ramp that would be closed during the peak hours. So, even this ramp does get used quite a bit, and that traffic does cause some of the queuing to occur on the Beltline and slow that traffic down. So, it would be open other times, just not during the peak hour. And that's low build concept two. Now, low build concept three is all of them combined, including the green. And the green is actually starting to make improvements to the bridge itself, one of the main choke points for the Beltline Facility. We would be widening the bridge, creating an auxiliary lane. You would see over at the ramps here, we would be extending this ramp to allow for more time to get onto the Beltline Highway. We would be removing this ramp as part of low build option three. Whenever there is a ramp on each, whenever they're on the same side, it's pretty problematic because of the weaving that occurs, getting off and on. So, that would be removed, and we would essentially create some sort of ramp to make that, that movement. So, that is low build concept three. If there's any questions at this point before I move forward. And what, just to let you guys know what discussions have been to date, we had a Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting last night. We've talked about potentially recommending to the Steering Committee, which we haven't met, so it's a little preview, that low build one and low build two concepts will likely be set aside for the NEPA process, but they would still be incorporated in this low build concept three. But standalone, probably not the best options to move forward.
Is, should we ask our questions at the end of the presentation?
I guess probably the best idea.
So, next, we have the improved existing. So, now you'll start seeing, this is a medium build concept. There's low build, medium build, and high build. The medium build concepts do show some improvement to the facility. There is still some over-capacity with this concept, so it doesn't still quite get us where we need to be in 20 years if we're looking at having under-capacity improvements for the Beltline. What you can see here is, again, some improvements to the Delta interchange, removing that ramp, reconfiguring some of the ramps along the facility, be having an auxiliary lane on the bridge. And it's really the existing configuration just improved, so making some improvements to the Division River Avenue interchange as well, with extending some of the ramps. The local arterial concept is one that we've actually been hearing a lot of positives about. We had our March 16th open house, and this ranked very favorably within that. We've found that there's been a lot of traffic. A lot of people want to get from the Santa Clara area over to Green Acres, and they have to take the Beltline Highway to do so. So, we've come up with this concept that would essentially allow for a local arterial bridge to cross the river and allow for that movement to happen. This would be two lanes in each direction. We're finding that this would also be potentially a good transit route for this. We've been working closely with LTD, and we'll continue to have some discussions with them as well. What we found in terms of our evaluation, this does help remove traffic off of the Beltline Highway itself, but it still isn't improving the Beltline Highway. So, you're still having the weaving operational issues on the highway, but traffic is removed and taken to the north. This is a split diamond family taping. Now, we're getting into the very, the larger footprint type options for the Beltline Highways. You can see here, we still have the local arterial bridge proposed in this concept. And instead of using Division Avenue that kind of connects to all of these, there would be a new road connection or an improved road connection that would cul-de-sac those local access points. Because this movement would actually serve as the ramp now, so Division Avenue. So, this is how this will split. It's a split diamond, essentially. You'd get off earlier to access this interchange. And you can move forward up here. You can see a separated facility here to move eastbound. And in this one, you can also see that there are some improvements to the Good Pasture Island interchange. Now, this would actually likely be proposed with any of the concepts because Good Pasture, this all operates as a system. So, Good Pasture Island interchange does affect the way that Delta also operates. So, there would be some roadway improvements for that interchange as well, extending the ramps, just to get traffic off of Delta Highway a little sooner. Next, we have the auxiliary lane concept. Again, now, these are starting to get to the at-capacity or under-capacity alternatives. Again, you see the local arterial bridge concept proposed in this, improvements to Delta interchange, improvements to Good Pasture. And this is creating an auxiliary lane over the Lamont River. And one thing I do want to note, you'll notice that there have been some improvements. So, when you have this local arterial, the traffic will actually either go down to a signalized intersection to go westbound here, if they don't, if they want to continue on to the Beltline Highway, not access the Santa Clara area. So, I just wanted to point that out in some of the concepts. With this, you see a separated bridge structure over Division Avenue, so you can get up and then you can access up and over Beltline Highway. So, there's some improved designs at the Division Avenue interchange. So, we have a couple left. This is the Collector-Distributor Concept Alternative. This one, as you can see, it has two separate bridge structures, separated from the Beltline Facility. And how this movement works is when you want to get off of the Beltline to access either Delta, Division, you get off over here. And so, there's a separate structure. You can continue on straight. You're not on the Beltline Highway, you're on the separated structure to get off and over in this area. What that does is it eliminates a lot of the weave movements that are occurring on the highway itself. So, there are still weave movements occurring, it's just not on the facility. So, people that are on the facility on Beltline Highway would continue straight through without having those conflicts occur on the highway. This is the last concept that we've been looking at for the Beltline Facility. This is the ramp braid alternative concept, and this is by far our largest.
Yeah.
Our largest. It is big, yes. And as you can see, there are a lot of new structures that are occurring, and there are several new bridge structures that would be built over the Lamont River in a new interchange to.
Yeah.
They're, it's big. And just to cut to the chase, both the PMT and Stakeholder Advisory Committee are recommending to the Steering Committee that this be set aside as well. So, you guys will be seeing that at your next meeting, if you don't mind me getting a little advance there.
Preview.
Preview, yes. But it would definitely be the highest-cost alternative that we have at this point. We haven't done a detailed cost comparison analysis, but just the structures alone, we can figure this be pretty.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Savannah.
Oh, no, that's the last.
Mayor asked us to wait, but I was going to ask.
Something specific about.
Yeah. Were you going to tell us about the, the light system south of the Delta interchange and how that'll change that interaction?
This?
And the reason, and the, yes. And then, the reason we took the flyover from northwest off the table?
Okay. So, earlier on in our process, one of the first drawings, if you will, that we identify, that we drew up, was a flyover on Delta Highway, mainly because, you know, that movement, the movement that goes west is so heavy that we would look at something similar to what you see on the Beltline, I-5 Beltline interchange. But just in terms of cost, in terms of footprint, it just seemed really unfeasible for this location. So, our committees early on recommended that that be set aside. It would have to start really far back, and it would really, some major improvements would have to.
Yeah.
Yes. Major improvements at the facility. It would have to. In terms, are you talking about this, this signalized intersection?
Yeah.
So, there has been some concern from our Stakeholder Committee, and we had a meeting last night, and there was a lot of discussion about what this would look like. Right now, we would be proposing that some sort of signalized intersection occur there. Now, the, the concern that we've been hearing is the movements are so heavy that is a signalized intersection really the most feasible option for that location. And at this point, we haven't done enough detailed analysis or enough examination of that one particular location to really know what type of options exist. We've done a really high-level analysis for the overall facility, and when we take it into the NEPA process, that's when the actual detailed analysis will occur. So, we definitely understand that there are some concerns with the potential signal at that location as something that will carry forward into the NEPA process. Does that? Well, this is going a lot quicker than I was, 40 minutes for questions. I shouldn't, I shouldn't practice this for an hour earlier today. So, next steps.
It's okay to end early.
I know. We'll see, we'll see.
We never go over time with talking.
Yeah, 40 minutes for questions. So, just, so that is our range of concepts that we have studied so far. What we plan to do over the next few months is narrow this range from the 10 that we have to about three to five. So, there might be a combination of some of the alternatives that NEPA can really focus on, just the ones that we want to see examined further. And when I mean we, I mean the council, as well as the commissioners, and all of our bodies that are involved in the decision-making of this, this planning process. We also plan to develop some short-term solutions. This will occur over the summer months. We know that there is a problem today on the facility, and there needs to be some sort of solutions addressed today. So, we will be doing a ramp meter study. We do have $2 million from the Job and Transportation Act to look at ramp metering on the Beltline Highway. So, we'll be doing that process in conjunction with this process as well. So, we'll have a variety of short-term solutions, and we'll have a ramp metering study as well. So, that's kind of where we're going with short-term solutions.
What's a ramp meter study?
The lights.
The lights on the ramps.
Like in Portland.
So, ramp meters are the signal, signals on the ramp terminal. So, you essentially have a signal telling you when you can go onto the main line. And we hope to wrap up the facility plan with this short-term solutions with the narrow range of concepts this fall. We do plan to come back to you to get buy-off on that range of concepts to move forward into the NEPA process. So, this is definitely good timing to come and talk to you all about what we've been doing. And the NEPA, we do have some funding for the NEPA process. It's not enough to cover all of NEPA, but we plan, we hope to get started within the next year, year and a half, assuming that everything goes as planned. That wraps up my presentation.
Before I open it up to questions, thank you, Savannah. Can you just, in the course of your conversation thus far, can you identify any major issues that have come up in the discussion about number of lanes or footprint, some of the things that are, are kind of the points that we might be having to pay attention to sooner rather than later?
Yeah, so, it's been quite an interesting process. We have received quite the range of comments. I mean, there have been community concerns about large footprints, business impacts, residential impacts. But there has also been the concern that the Beltline Highway has a problem, and there needs to be something done to it. So, when we had our last open house on the 16th, there's a really good summary in your packet as well. There's a chart in there that talks about the pri, I shouldn't say priorities, but the preferred options to move forward from the public. And we've heard that the, the middle to lower high build, I don't know how to say that, not the ramp braid, but some of the auxiliary lane concept, the split diamond, low build three, that those should be moved forward as part of the process. So, the, I think people are realizing that there are some trade-offs that are going to occur as part of this process, and that's the primary, I think, the primary response that we've been receiving. I don't know if Chris wants to add to that.
Some of the specifics are access to and from River and Division Avenue for the Santa Gravel operations and other businesses there. Concern about signal operation at River Avenue and River Road, as Counselor Clark mentioned, potential interchange operation at Delta Highway and Beltline, and potential for a signal. It's premature to know what kind of control would be there, as Savannah said. Those are design details. There could, for example, be a free right turn movement that would allow for free flow through that. So, the message is, trust us, we'll work through those details.
And just, just so you know, one of the concerns, a lot of people have provided comment that, oh, close Division, close River Avenue, those are the problems. And what we're actually finding in our analysis is those aren't necessarily the problem if you close Division, and which is why you do not see those options within our range. If you close Division Avenue, all that traffic goes to River Road.
That's true.
And so, the River Road interchange, and a lot of traffic does use Division and River. So, just wanted to add on to that.
Thank you for that. Andrea, Mike, do you have anything you want to say before I take questions from?
Not really, Mayor. I think that the presentation was pretty comprehensive, and the issues that were brought up by both the staff were pretty much it. I was kind of surprised at, at the presentation a couple times, because I didn't realize how much, how many people are on that road all the time, I guess, is what I want to say. You know, when we hear about the, how many miles are traveled and how people access that from all points of town, it's really, it was really kind of enlightening. I know that there is a problem there, but I couldn't quite figure out why, but now I kind of.
Everybody's on it?
Yeah, everybody's on it.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I really appreciate how thorough all of the options have been presented, I mean, in terms of the scope of, and range of possibilities here. Now, there were, I think, some questions as well around the bridge crossings as a potential for, I, one of, one of our county commissioners brought up the bridge options and their concerns, but I think, at the end of the day, the, the split diamond and the collector-distributor are the two options I think you were referring to there, that everybody seemed to, thought, seemed to think would have the best chance of, of solving the actual traffic problem on Beltline. So.
And I guess one of the things that I had this thought about when you're talking about the bridges, so, early on in the conversation, there had been a, a concept about a bridge farther south. And I think that got, can you speak to that?
Yes, I can speak to that. So, one of the things that we heard early on, some of our first open houses, was no bridge south of the river, and.
South of Beltline.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. I, I, some history there, I guess, about 10 to 15 years ago, there was a proposal for, and I, of course, this predates me, but there was a proposal to have a bridge south of Beltline down in the Valley River. I guess it was called the Valley River Bridge. We heard a lot about that and the community not wanting us to revisit that scenario. However, we did hear from others that they did want us to revisit the scenario as well. So, it was, again, one of those mix of comments. But it was outside our study area. When we did the origin, destination, where are people going, where are people coming? It was just too far outside of the scope to really look at it. We weren't looking at a bridge location study. We were looking at trying to improve the Beltline Highway. And so, we see the, the north bridge arterial concept, mainly because of the traffic going to both sides north of Beltline. Does that?
Yeah, it pretty much covers it. But it, it did come up in conversation, and it was clearly earlier dismissed as, as an option.
And I want to say too, that I initially really liked the idea as a concept of the flyover, because the real main problem are cars going north on Delta and trying to get west out to Santa Clara. And that flyover option took a big chunk of the traffic off of the, off of that whole facility, so that it could have solved a lot of the problem. The challenge is, it has to start on the right-hand side of north-going Delta, and in order to build a facility that would be a flyover, you have to fill in about half the Delta ponds. And that became real clearly not an option for a lot of people. So, that's why that, you know, for the general public who may be thinking of that, that, that option got ruled out pretty quickly because of its impacts.
Yeah, I've got, yes?
And if I could say one more thing, Mayor, thank you. The more I think about it, and I think, what I heard at the public hearing was that whatever we decide, decide collectively, that we need to support collectively and go forth, because a lot of people initially brought up issues around the West Eugene Parkway. brought up issues around the West Eugene Parkway. And so, I feel a commitment to this. I, you know, this is one of the reasons that I got involved in government, because I felt like this wasn't an issue that was being addressed for the west part of Eugene. So I hope that we can come to a, to a point where we all can agree on whatever the design is that we are going to do and then find the funding, because that's another piece of it, and then move ahead with that. Because I think that that's really important, that we're, you know, we've asked a lot of stakeholders, a lot of people, a lot of staff time, so we need to all be supportive of whatever the collective agreement is and move ahead with it.
I've got George Brown and then Chris.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I went over this stuff the last two nights and it's just hard to tell from these maps what all these...
Yeah, you have some small...
And so, I guess my first question would be, is there going to be another public presentation that, and did you, at the other ones, did you have those big maps like, like LTD was using at their presentations for the EMX, because that would really...
So, in terms of other public meetings, we are not going to have any more open houses for the Beltline Facility Plan process. Now, when NEPA takes over, there'll be a whole slew of public, um, open houses at that point. So there'll be further opportunity to comment. At the meeting that we held on March sixteenth, where we went over all of these alternatives, we did have the large rollout maps that were posted around the room. And they are very large, so people could draw on them and actually look at the alignments really close.
Will there be an opportunity to, I mean, are those going to be hauled out again and where are we past that stage now and just...
Those will be brought out in the NEPA process again.
Okay, alright.
So, well, I should rephrase that. So whatever is decided out of our steering committee in terms of which to move forward, if there's a combination of these alternatives, they'll be redrawn, but those will be brought out to the community.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I, well, it'll be good because I, you know, I don't get to that part of town that often. I don't drive on Beltline that often. And I have been there when it's been incredibly congested and, and a lot of times when it hasn't been. I, I understand there's a problem, we're not contesting that. It was just kind of hard to tell from, I'm not familiar with a lot of the side streets either. So, when all these, these alternatives involve, um, you know, new arterials and more bridge work and, so it's, um, it'd be really great to see those big maps, because then I could really cement in my mind, like, oh yeah.
And I can also send some eleven-by-seventeens if that would be preferred as well, if everybody would like to see something.
Your, your attachment B also contains larger versions of the present, that were included in the presentation, but they're in color.
It was still kind of hard to tell for me, because they're, I'm not, I'm not requesting a copy of the big one.
All, all those concepts are available on ODOT's website.
That was one.
Beltlineplan.com.
Okay. Well, I just did have a couple of, that's it for my general questions, I just had a couple of specific ones. On map number one, can we go back to map one, number one?
Oh, sure. See if I can work this thing again. Let's just do this. Oh. Thank you, this thing is, uh, it's quite trickery.
Okay, over there on, on Delta, it shows one of those ramps being removed.
How's that?
Oh, thank you, I was wondering what was going on. I was starting to begin to wonder if you guys are playing jokes on me, yeah. I'm sorry, go.
Well, I just wanted to see if I had this right. If, at the, at the Beltline Delta interchange, there's the, the triangle, the, the one in the middle, that would be removed?
This one right here?
Was that one of the options? Yeah, is that the one where people use, if they're going wa, they're going westbound and then they want to go north on?
That's right.
East, east, east to north.
Yes, sorry.
East to, pardon me, east to north.
Mm-hmm.
And then what would that be replaced with?
Right here, so people would take this green.
To the signal.
And then they would get, and then they would go northbound from that point?
Yes.
I see, okay, thank you. Yeah, I've got a zillion of those, I won't go through all those right now. My last question would be, what is a split diamond?
So, split diamond...
Never heard that word before.
Yeah, it's, um, so what it does essentially, so when you, this is, try to, you might have to help me out here, but when you have a diamond configuration like this, this is a diamond configuration interchange, what it ends up doing is it creates another, essentially off-ramps. So the diamond configuration ends up being this and kind of over in this area. So it's a, it's a diamond that's spread out. And Chris, I don't know if I'm explaining that as...
And in that case, a parallel roadway to Beltline along Division Avenue and just south of Beltline become the, um, the connections between the on and the off ramps, as Savannah said, they, they just, they move much further apart and that's what, a half a mile or something like that?
Right, so here's that split.
And so, those freeway ramps, very similar to Club Road, Covert Road interchange, would not have accesses to them, they would be freeway ramps and, and function much differently than, well, in this case, Division Avenue, you see, doesn't provide access to the businesses, the properties, and that's why the new roadway system on Lone Oak there is proposed.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm also available anytime to review some of these details.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Uh, Chris, you're next.
Oh, thank you. Great presentation. And I guess, at the, at the thirty thousand-foot level, I am incredibly pleased that we are even having this conversation. This has been something we've needed to do for so long, and it is just tremendous that we've even got options to look at. I appreciate the money question and, and this is so needed that we'll really have to work on the money and whatever we need to do in a united way to help get the money, I think will be critical.
United front.
United, well, united front or united locally or, or united, whatever way we can.
I don't think united way pays for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, united way. The fact that we're participating in the way we are, I, I appreciate the intent, I think the intent here is really good, so that the process you're going through can really reinforce that, which I very appreciate it all. So, I have read the report with great interest, particularly around the balance we're going to have to try to strike on capacity improvements versus cost versus intrusion, I will say, into the, into the infrastructure. And, uh, this is really a nice extension of the discussion we were having on Monday, talking about gas emissions and how, at least in my opinion, demand management ain't going to get us there. We never really should have expected demand management to get us there. There has to be an infrastructure cost. But I'm really appreciative of the fact that if we have that infrastructure cost discussion, we're trying to be as reasonable and practical and balanced as we can with it. And, yeah, we can't do the, the full build-out split braid, have everything we want in the kitchen sink, um, but trying to find the one that still gets us to where we want to go. I don't think we can go to the extreme other end as well. Well, let's make a little tweaking and call it good. That won't satisfy the problem and people will just be as frustrated as ever. So, um, I think this process will hopefully get us to the right balance. I think that, I'm real hopeful that it will, and I think the right people are involved. So, um, I really appreciate the different options here and I'm looking forward to the committee's recommendation in terms of where they get to, because I'm, I'm, this, this is a long time coming.
Thank you. Jennifer, you're next.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, and I would like a copy of those eleven-by-seventeen maps, please. I really like the idea of an, a bridge just north of the Beltline for the folks that want to get from Good Pasture, or not Good, um, Green Acres to all those homes north of Division. So if I, currently, um, at that intersection there of Delta Highway and Green Acres, you cannot turn left, right there, you can't turn left. Would that be a left-hand turn?
Um, in this scenario, yes. I mean, it would be a full movement intersection.
And then, um, what exactly is an auxiliary lane?
Oh, so an auxiliary lane, um, I'll use an example of I-105, so, in Eugene. Um, what it does is essentially, it connects, it's a separate road, well, not, I shouldn't say separate road, it's a separate lane between two ramps. So when you get off of Delta, you would, and you, if you wanted just to go over to Division, there would just be one lane that you can continue on and stay on until you reach that exit. So you didn't actually have to get back on Beltline and get off.
It provides, and the example is between Covert Road and Interstate Five, and it provides much more room for the weaving movements to occur, that people don't have to get on right away and they don't have to get off right away or at the last minute. And that improves the safety and the flow on, on the facility. And some people never intend to get on 105, they're destined, say, if they're eastbound, they're destined for Cottage Grove, for example, and they always stay in that auxiliary lane. So they never interfere with the, the mainline flow of the traffic. And so that improves the safety and the operation of the facility.
Oh yeah, I can see where those would be really helpful. And then, um, oh, and then here at Good Pasture Island Road, are you proposing to widen the bridge?
In this scenario, the bridge would be widened, yes.
So two lanes both ways?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, that's good, thank you.
Okay, um, Mike, I had you in the queue, but Alan hasn't had the first go-around, so I'm going to defer to him first.
I'm glad we're having this conversation as well. This is a, I, a very big problem for Eugene and, and one of the least safe intersections at the Delta Highway-Beltline, I think, in the county. Do you have a sense of the range of costs?
You know, unfortunately, I don't at this point.
After the NEPA narrowing?
We, it'll be part of the NEPA narrowing. What we plan to do is, we still want to get some ballpark, we want to get a range of costs for these, just to inform everybody a little bit more, but we won't be doing a detailed cost analysis or estimate as part of this process.
So, do you have a sense of the ballpark right now?
I don't at this point.
Can't catch ya, huh?
More than a million.
Yes.
Yeah, more than a couple.
Probably talking about...
Could be even, yes, a couple hundred.
Could be even a couple of millions.
With some of these concepts.
Yeah, you, you look at Beltline I-5 and get a sense of an order of magnitude and see the footprint it has and try to drop that down here. And no, nobody's willing to put dollar figures out there, but, uh, you know...
That whole thing was two hundred million.
You know, ones with a couple of zeros after them, yeah. It starts to get expensive.
I know. Um, well, I agree, we probably can't get away with just TDM and TSM to, but they are usually the most cost-effective and also the, the solutions that we should do first and max them out and then do build on top of that. So I, I think that's really important. The, the one problem that is, that I would like to see solved is the northbound Delta Highway weave with Belt, with Beltline, where you crisscross, that, that's in particular the worst one.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, that one's up above that, at, at that intersection.
Oh, right here, yes.
That one is just always very difficult to do. And then the congestion between Belt, or Delta and, and River Road is a big, big issue. So, all of these seem to help address that. Really resisting talking about naming the streets, so I won't.
Knew he was gonna say that.
Keep resisting.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a good instinct.
Betty, do you want to round the fragment?
Just, um, a question about bridges. All of these involve extra bridges, right?
The bridge would need to be replaced with all of these, so, yes, I mean, you would be rebuilding the bridge, whether or not some of these would have separate structures, and that's a design level detail, but yes, the bridge would need to be rebuilt.
There was one concept that looked as if it had two new bridges.
Yeah. So this one? The Collector-Distributor.
On each side.
Yep, so you would have the existing bridge or the existing alignment on Beltline Highway, and then you would have two likely separate structures, one immediately north and one immediately south of the Beltline Highway, to eliminate that weave movement.
That's a lot of work on the river then.
There would be, yes.
A lot of disruption.
There'd be some work on the river.
Riverbanks, thank you.
Mike? Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Savannah and all the ODOT staff who've done a fantastic job, I think, in trying to get a, a big chunk of the community involved in this process. There's, there are representatives from the neighborhood groups who are on the, the citizen committees that have been a part of this all along, and different other interest groups that have representatives on the, who've been a part of the discussion all the way through. And I think that ODOT's done a really nice job with that, trying to understand what the community really wants to build here. And I wanted to say thank you to George, because George is the one who was on here first and allowed me to, to jump in at the beginning there and take his place, because I live about, uh, less than half a mile, uh, east of the Delta-Beltline intersection there, and most that, of this entire facility is within Ward Five. And I drive that northbound over the top of that and do that little weave you were talking about, Alan, almost every day. And I can tell you that the cars start queuing up there at about 4:30 and back up past Good Pasture. And one of the first news stories I saw when I first started on council was the young couple who was, like so many others, stuck in line there and they got hit. And their baby died, um, in the backseat. And that had a pretty big impact on me. And I, this was a, a project near and dear to my heart that I wanted to be a part of helping, and I've really been happy to be able to do that. The guys over there that serve at Fire Station Number Nine at Valley River can tell you about their nearly nightly trek from the fire station over to the intersections there because of the accidents that happen. So I agree with you that we should be looking at the, the things that we can do in, in the way of TDM and so forth, but I'm looking at the, the alternatives here that will actually solve the problem, that will actually give us the capacity on Beltline to make it safe and to make it not so congested. Thanks.
Thank you. So, um, a couple of comments that I just wanted to make about this is that I, I think some of the issues that are going to come forward in this conversation are going to be about what size footprint do we end up, um, having out there? And that concept that we have on one hand, that the, the more space you allow, the more they come, that kind of concept versus the real and apparent need for, for safety and mobility, and then the whole notion of, on one hand, wanting to deal with our emissions issues and all of those by not overbuilding, but on the other hand, you don't want people clogged up filling, uh, the air with emissions, as well as you always point out, Chris. So I, there is, there is some kind of balance here that we're trying to reach. And I looked at this, um, evaluation criteria, and I, I guess it's implicit, but I just, I don't see a sort of, any indication that we're trying to find ways in this project to meet state greenhouse goals, uh, gas goals and things of that sort. And it's not, it isn't sort of called out in the evaluation criteria.
So, yes, greenhouse gas goals and emissions definitely on everybody's mind right now. You've probably heard ODOT say that we don't have a methodology or metrics in place. So early on, we try to figure out, okay, how can we address greenhouse gas emissions as best as we can with no information or no metric or model to use? So what we've done is we use two proxies. One is to model vehicle hours of delay and one to model vehicles' miles traveled. And what we found is some of these, all of, aside from the low build concepts, the higher build concepts do reduce vehicle hours of delay. Now, vehicle miles traveled varies, it's about a 1% difference. There's either no change, or there's a five, a .5% reduction, or a .5% increase in vehicle miles traveled depending on the alternative. So that, I mean, those are the proxies that we use. I understand that it's not exactly what we need to get that, to get that fully understood.
So I know you're in our conversation, MPC meetings, and I guess the only thing I'm thinking about is we're, we're sort of working with these new sort of measurement criteria. And I don't know if there's a way that that gets kind of, um, employed in this discussion too, but it helps you sort of measure what you're doing and how you're, even while we're trying to learn how to do it better.
Right, and the NEPA process, assuming that all of those details are starting to be worked out within the next year, um, the NEPA process will be able to address a lot of those.
And finally, I, I just want to, I, uh, all the things I just previously said, but, I'd also want to call out, and I think you've mentioned it, and it's been part of your discussion obviously, is that the folks who live there, that's, uh, the impact on their lives, improved safety on one hand, but not overly impacting where they live and the quality of life in their, uh, neighborhoods seems to be something that we have to kind of bring up to the level of importance of, of these other things as well in, in that discussion. And it seems to me, if we keep all of those things right up at the top, then we stand a better chance of coming to a place where we get some mutual agreement, because you can sort of talk, we can all sort of honor each other's priorities. And that seems to be the, the path forward as far as I can see.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, anybody? Yes, Alan?
Um, true, follow on the greenhouse gas impacts. So, I know that this is a, a hot topic, so to speak, but, um, beyond the, the procu-metrics, are you going to go beyond that in turn, in the, in the EIR and the NEPA process?
I guess, I'd, assuming that there is the methodology and metric in place at that point, the NEPA process will take that into account.
Would you create a methodology or the tools?
It would have to be ODOT-approved, and I know that ODOT plans to have something within the next year, so...
To do, to model?
Yeah, to, yeah, it would need to be consistent with other state plans as well.
Because I know things like no idle policies and synchronizing streetlights where you don't have people sitting and idling does have a pretty dramatic decrease in greenhouse gas emissions, so...
That's why.
Have a big impact there.
That's going to be expensive there.
The other question I have about the river, currently, does that bridge, does that have a pylon in the river?
Ooh, I don't know. Good question. I don't know.
No.
I believe it's a simple span.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too, and I would, I would hope that any option you had didn't put a pylon in the river, on any of the bridges. It seems like it's now enough there that we could span the river without putting a pylon in the river and impacting the river more than it is today.
Thanks for bringing that up. So I guess I don't see any other questions or comments. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. I'll be back in a couple...
Feel much better informed.
Thanks, everybody, for your work.
Yeah.
You recovered well.
More presentations you've got down.
Alan?
Thanks.
Depending on time of year, there is one in the river, there is a pylon in the river.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
When the water rises, or...
When the river, yeah.
Especially on the west side.
Okay.
Depends on how much water we're talking about.
So we're going to have our second work session today on a review of the 2009 implementation of the bond measure to fix streets, and it's going to be a good story, I think, so, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Kurt, our Public Works Director, and let him walk us through this.
Okay. Well, thanks for the opportunity to be here today. This was actually a work session that we had contemplated getting in front of you a couple of months ago, and so therefore you have the information associated with this from some time back, so we'll be referring to some information that you already have. But this is a work session to talk about the bond measure for street maintenance. So as you recall, in November of 2008, the voters of Eugene passed a five-year, $35.9 million measure for that purpose, and within the resolution authorizing that, there were some specific elements, one of which was the identification of 32 specific projects to be addressed through the bond measure. Secondly, there was a stipulation that an outside auditor be contracted with to verify that the funds each year were actually spent for the authorized purpose. And third, there was a commitment by the City Manager to appoint a Street Repair Review Panel to advise him separately from the work of the financial auditor, on the issue of how the money was spent, and independently submit a report documenting the use of the bond proceeds. So that's really why we're here today. The projects for 2009, I think we've seen in a tour that we took earlier this year, and were documented in the report from the Street Repair Review Panel. The criteria for that, as you might recall, took into account not actually having the bond measure approved until November of 2008, and the desire to get some projects on the ground in 2009. So the projects last summer were largely those that were ready to go fairly quickly, shovel-ready, if you will, some that didn't totally disrupt the community, and work that started moving us in the direction of equalizing, to the extent possible, the use of the bond proceeds over the five-year period. So as you recall, the projects completed last summer were the Bailey Hill Road project in the vicinity of Churchill High School, Good pasture Island Road, east of Delta Highway, portion of Railroad Boulevard, and then the off-street bike-ped path component last year was the Amazon Path from 19th to 31st, all total amounting to about $2.7 million of the measure. We did, in fact, contract with Isler CPA to complete an audit of how the money was spent, and just quoting from their report, really the only comment that is germane to this discussion today, "Based on the procedures performed, the bond proceeds were used for the authorized purposes and in compliance with the restrictions set forth in City Council Resolution Number 4953," and a copy of that report was attached to the report from the Street Repair Review Panel. With regard to the Street Repair Review Panel, there was a 12-member group appointed last October. That group conducted three meetings, and we also took them on a bus tour of the completed projects to see what had happened in the field. We have not really had an appropriate opportunity to thank the folks who participated in that. Janet Calvert is here in the audience today. Pardon me?
Paul.
Paul, what was it? Paul came in while I was not looking. In addition to those two, Paul Atkins, Bob Klein, John Borowski, Steve Lee, Howie Bonnet, Clayton Walker, Dan Brown, Gary Wildish, Bruce Mulligan, and Jim Wilcox participated in that effort, and extended them a debt of gratitude for the time they spent working on their particular report. Within their report, the statement was made, and I quote, "That we unanimously conclude that the bond proceeds were used for the authorized purposes and in compliance with the limitations and restrictions outlined in Council Resolution 4953." It made some further comments encouraging the acceleration of projects, to the extent possible, to take advantage of what we found to be very favorable bid prices last year and so far for 2010. And also, a comment specifically encouraging the continued public educational effort. I think, as many of you know, having made transportation funding presentations for a number of years, what we find is that the message goes out, and some of the components are forgotten with the passage of time, so we've got the additional encouragement to continue with that particular effort. Looking ahead to the summer of 2010, we'll have another extremely busy year with regard to the use of the bond proceeds. We'll see work on Good pasture Island Road, west of Delta Highway, the intersection of 29th and Willamette, which some work is already underway up there, the extreme southern end of Willamette from 46th to 52nd, some additional pieces of 18th Avenue, specifically City View to appoint Western Chambers continuing the efforts out there, as well as the section between Hilliard and Patterson. Harlow Road will be dealt with this summer, all the way from I-5 to Colbert Road, portions of Patterson Street from 13th to 23rd, and the bike-ped project this year will be reworking the Fern Ridge Path in the vicinity of Polk and Chambers. Again, it will be, if you spend any time driving around in Eugene in 2009, I think you found it encouraging, in my view, that there was so much going on, that we actually got some complaints about how many things were going on, and after years of being able to do so little, we did find some gratification with that. 2010 will be very much the same. The projects I just went through are really those that are part of the bond measure, did not include the, what we'll do with the local gas tax, some of the economic stimulus money that's coming in that will go on the ground this year, and not to try and recite those, I thought I would just pass out a press release that will go out in the morning that lists those in a little greater detail. Then I would also refer you to the 2010 pavement management report that went out in your In the very recent past, that does include a more comprehensive listing that pretty well matches up with the press release as to what we see in terms of bond measure, gas tax, pothole projects, lorry seals, and et cetera for 2010, so again, another, a very busy year. Might just take a moment to talk about the overall funding picture, and since I've been here so many times talking about how we need to do more, you know, I'd like to be able to say that the problem is resolved, and everything is good to go. While I think the message today is encouraging, I think, I would just offer some cautious optimism as to where we're headed, in particular, the bond measure. We'll put some more work on the ground this year and for the next three summers. It does have an expiration date, and we need to think about how this would be sustained into the future. On the operations and maintenance side, probably as encouraging news as I've been able to offer for some time, with the transfers from utility funds authorized by the council through the ordinance process, last year, together with House Bill 2001, we're probably looking at FY11 budget that one more time takes some amount of local gas tax to balance the O&amp;M side, but the preliminary numbers that we have on the House Bill 2001 implementation indicate that even within our current FY10 budget, we should be about a half million dollars better than we had anticipated. That's against a shortfall of somewhere in excess of $3 million that we've been battling for years, but a half million is a good step in that direction. For FY11, we think the picture should improve by about $2 million, and by FY12, when we see the full implementation of the state gas tax increase and the fees associated with the House Bill 2001, we're thinking that we should have improved by about $3 million. So, that will take questions or comments that you might have.
City Manager.
Just real quickly, Mayor, I just want to say, just great work by Kurt and his team. This is a good example of promises made, promises kept, this first year of the bond issue, and I think, well, I know the community will continue to be very pleased with the work that they turn out, and this is one of the really big success stories from the last 12 to 18 months.
City Manager. So I, on behalf of all of us, really want to thank the Street Repair Review Panel. Thank you very much, Janet and Paul, and because you're kind enough to be here, I don't know if you have any comments you want to make, or not, you don't have to, don't feel any pressure, I'm just, I've just wanted to offer that if you had any observation, that you would have the chance to stop, I think you have to come up to one of these mics if you're going to...
Well, I would say first that...
My, your Paul.
There's cameras and everything, we want to get you on.
I got the camera.
It's a microphone, that's the issue.
We want to hear you.
I wanted to say first, as a couple of you on the panel know very well, this has been a long time coming. My first year on the City Budget Committee, 1997, then Public Works Director Christine Anderson said she was sure that the state would produce more money for the streets the next year, 1998. By 2001, 2002, the City Council didn't want to face it any longer, so they appointed the first Street Maintenance Committee, in which Jennifer, among others, was a member, and we came up, Howie Bonnet, had the idea of a small local gas tax, a street maintenance fee, which has not yet made it all the way through, but...
Working on it.
With your luck, you got a bond measure through in that one little opening, so it was fun, finally, to see some results for something that I'd been working on off and on for 13 years, and it looks good for the next year. I think those projects, 18th, will make a big difference in public reaction, because that's such a widely-used street. Also, I would suggest probably that if you can get your PR releases out to the residents of the Harlow Road area, where there's more housing along the road, so there may be more local input or local reactions, that might be a wise idea. So, I was glad to work on this again this year. I don't know what the future holds, but we had some success, finally.
Thank you. Thank you. We just really appreciate your comments and appreciate your service, you and Janet. Both, Janet, you want to say something briefly?
Well, thank you. I certainly have learned a lot about potholes. I refuse to call this street maintenance thing. It's my pothole committee, but anyway. I think one of the real challenges that continue, not only the funding, but residents don't understand when they live on an unimproved versus an improved street, and why the unimproved streets are not getting improved, generally. Generally, there's been some. And I think that's an education, I guess, an education issue that the council and everyone needs to address, because people living on those unimproved streets, they're getting, they are not being improved with time, and so it's hard for them to understand, they voted for something and nothing's happening, so that's one of the challenges.
Thank you very much. Yes, there's always more challenges, but we haven't been seeing as much of Kurt as we used to, and he's probably happy for that. But we are appreciating the work that's been done, and I, frankly, I can't think of something that I'm agreeing with Paul. I get more mail about 18th than probably any other place in town, so seeing those changes made will really make a difference. And before I call on Chris and whoever else wants to make George's comments, there was a Public Works newsletter came out today via our email, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to say in general how impressed I am, in spite of a tough time frame, and how much is going on in so many ways, all over the community, and we just appreciate the work of the department, and, you know, everywhere from 43 trees planted along the Amazon, to I forget how many bikes fixed at the project, homeless connect, and so on every front, we're proud of the department. Thanks very much for the work you do.
Very much appreciate the acknowledgement, and I'll pass that along.
Great. Okay, I bet Kristen and George.
Oh, thank you. I'm just incredibly pleased at the progress that we've made. I mean, this was an issue that was important to me when I first got on the council, and I know it's been an issue that's been just languishing for years and years, and it's really a great deal of pride that this council is really, I think, helping us turn the corner. And I think we have turned the corner in many respects. I am also knowledgeable of the fact that we may be getting our O&amp;M under control, which is just an amazing thing all by itself, but it doesn't do anything really to deal with the backlog. The backlog is still there, it's still huge, and it still has to be dealt with, and I know the bond measure's a great start on that, but it's $170 million that still has to be dealt with. And now that we've got our yearly pretty much under control, or at least for the near future we do, which is a great thing, we really have to keep plugging away at that backlog, because that is what a lot of people notice, that is what they really see, and it is what we have to deal with. Like you, 18th is what I am constantly getting calls about, so that's just, it's a great project, it's also a high-profile project, and it will really be good, and it can't get started soon enough for a lot of folks, but I'm very encouraged that we, as a council, have done something really positive, that's taken a long time to get here, and with the assistance of people in the community, like the committee, we're, we didn't walk away from the problem, we picked it up, and we, there's still more to do, but I'm real pleased that we've made as much progress as we have.
George Poling?
Well, in addition to the time spent by the committee members, we also need to remember and thank the voters, because they're the ones that approved the bond measure, and remind them that this one's coming due in another three years, and the original plan was at the end of this current bond measure to go out and try and renew it for another five years, and hopefully with sports like this, we won't have that uphill battle to fight. You know, some other comments, along with what he said about getting a hold of the Harlow Road people early and often, I think that needs to include the entire Harlow Neighborhood Association, because it's hard to get in and out of that neighborhood without driving on Harlow Road. I guess this, once construction starts, I'm going to get a lot more traffic in my neighborhood because of the access to Willa Kenzie, so we need, that is important, we need to get the word out to all the neighborhoods that are affected, you know, early and often. And another comment that was made by the citizen group, which I agree 100% with, is the education piece. I'm sure every one of us weekly gets a phone call, an email, or a letter from someone saying, "Why are you fixing Street A and not Street B when Street A looks better than Street B?" So we need to continue to educate the people on unimproved roads versus improved roads, versus the funding mechanism, versus the selection process on why Street A looks in better shape than Street B, why are we doing that one first? Because that, those are the questions I think we all get about street maintenance from everybody, is the selection process. And I know there's a big formula somewhere in the traffic engineering world, but I can't explain it. All I can give them is the Reader's Digest version to cut down the three-minute, 32nd, rather, as opposed to the 30-minute discussion. Kurt's good at the 30-minute discussion, I'll just refer him to you. So again, thanks to the voters, thanks to the citizens that got involved in this, and I'm glad to see the improvements. And, you know, I've had, I'm glad Harlow Road's finally on this list, because... And, you know, I've had, I'm glad Harlow Road's finally on this list because I've had a number of people, one in particular that comes up over the bridge there off of Harlow in, from Eugene, from Springfield into Eugene, and their comment was, "Well, here we go again, dropping into Eugene," literally, because there's always been a big hole right there when you get off the bridge. So they always say they drop into Eugene. So hopefully we'll get that changed soon.
Slide in smoothly. All right, Alan, and then Jennifer.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate the thank you to the committee members, Paul, and others that worked on this, I think that's great. Also, thank the voters for passing this. I'm too, I am too happy about working on this. And as you said, John, it is really promises made, promises kept, I think that's a good way to say it. But I would like to say that this is just, this is a good start, but we haven't solved the problem. We still have a gigantic backlog of $170 million and growing. I don't think we've redone the calculation because we don't want to know the answer.
I think he probably has.
Yeah, actually...
What is the backlog now?
150 by the, by the current numbers.
Because you've taken out the 36 million.
Not necessarily. And without, I might just add a comment about that so we don't get overly exuberant about the number going down by 20 million. It reflects some favorable bid prices that we, in all likelihood, will not see forever. It reflects that through the testing, we found some streets that were originally categorized as reconstruct that we've been able to save with the overlay process. So just to caution that you can't take a one-to-one correlation of the bond measure and say, therefore, the backlog has gone down that much. But I'd, it would be fair to say that we're beginning to hold our own with it, so...
Right. Well, I think the salient point is that it's still $150 million worth of backlog, which is huge, with no real funding mechanism in sight. We're not gonna see it from the feds, we're not gonna see it from the state, we're not gonna see it from the county, and it really is incumbent upon us to solve the problem, unfortunately, which means it comes out of our pocket, and there's really not a good way to fund this. But we did have the council committee look at different way, a package of things to, different ways of funding this. And one of those things that was in particular my favorite option because it was the most equitable and covered the most people was the street utility fee. And I was wondering if you could give us a little status update, when that's gonna come back to council and how that's going along.
Sure. We don't have a specific timeframe for bringing that back. And recalling the last discussion we had with the council, a particular point in the critical path to get there is the billing system that is gonna largely revolve around the relationship building of the city council and the E-Web board. From a, from a technical standpoint, I think we could, we could give you an ordinance any time and let you talk about the metrics under which the fee would be calculated, but I don't, I don't know that today we're any closer to having a viable, affordable billing system than we have been in the past.
And otherwise, it's incumbent upon using our existing system, which is really E-Web.
Right, right.
Should be able to do that. And conversations with them have led where?
Do not, do not have an agreement at this point.
I was just saying, part of that, you know, Randy Bergwin is leaving also, and so there's been, I think he has purposefully, and I think appropriately so, wanted to have the new person on board to really take up that discussion.
Right. He's leaving April 30th, so maybe May 1st we can have a conversation.
May Day.
Welcome, new and new.
Hi, can I talk to you about something? I think the education part, as George mentioned, is really important. I get the same questions as we all do about that, you know. And one of the things I say is that it's five times more expensive to pay for a road that goes from, you know, drivable to being completely reconstructed, and we want to prevent that extra expense from happening than it is to go in and rebuild a street. Yes. So preventing those streets from falling off into that reconstruction is really important. And it may not look like we're doing it right, but I trust your folks to make those kind of calls and have a better sense of the total system in the city. And one of the things you did with that bond measure was to have everybody in the city get a little bit of the work and a little bit of the inconvenience of having to drive around and all. But the two projects I'm glad to see, because I get a lot of comments about them, are 18th as well, but also Patterson. And Patterson from 13th to 23rd is really good shit. So thanks for the good work.
Yes, thank you. And the council has had at least a couple of different discussions about this subject that George approached here with regard to the difference between an improved road and an unimproved road to city standards. A lot of those are just roads without curbs and gutters and appropriate construction that were brought in from once upon a time being county roads and have just never been built up. We've talked about assessment policy and how, as a general rule, the council majority has always felt that, or has for some time felt that, the homeowner who lives on an unimproved road didn't have to pay for the improved standard like everybody else who owns a house on an improved road does, so they bear some of the responsibility of bringing it up to that standard. And that seems to make some sense, although it's really expensive to do. Here's my question, and you probably won't like me much when we're done, but I'm gonna just ask it anyway. I would like, not necessarily now, but in memo form if you can, to have a review of the number of miles of unimproved roads, which I'm pretty sure you can give me off the top of your head. But then, I'd like to know what it would cost, roughly, to do a couple of inch overlay on all the unimproved roads in the city? So that we have that information. I know that's not the kind of fix we want to do for a whole bunch of reasons. It doesn't make sense, and it's not a good long-term, and in some cases, not a good short-term solution. But it's just information that I'd like to know, just for the sake of discussion, if you could.
Can you do that in two hours?
Well, yeah, we'd be happy to give you that information. I think with regards to the unimproved street issue, I could also tell you that through the enhanced pothole program the last couple of years, we've made a little bit of progress on that. And if you look at a street like Riverview and Cross Street, Bond Lane didn't really fit into the category of what we did with Riverview, but the staff dug in and looked for innovative ways to make things better without necessarily getting them to a permanent standard. But, you know, a full-depth reclamation process, you know, essentially what has been described as a large rototiller with cement stabilization and a chip-sealed top has provided immense improvements on some of those streets at minimal cost. And we're, as the, as the O&amp;M side of this gets healthier over time, we hope to be able to continue that at some level to do something for those streets. We can give you a number as to what a two-inch overlay would be, but I would, you know, I can tell you that that would not be something that you would want to spend that money on, given some of the other options that are available for getting to an improvement that's probably better than that with less money.
Actually, actually, you know, maybe a better question would be, it's more than a two-hour answer, which is why I kind of didn't go all the way to here. But while it's true that the council has always felt that the people who live on unimproved roads have a duty and obligation to be a part of paying for that being brought up to the other standard, I must tell you, I think the city has some degree of a responsibility as well because we assumed responsibility for those streets from the county without a plan to bring them up to code other than to have neighbors participate. And so, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd love to, if we can't afford to do it, I'd love to at least have a plan in place where we know how we would bring our unimproved roads to an improved status or to a much better status because some of them, and even right around Sheldon High School, for example, Metalark there, there are huge craters in some of the streets in our community that we should be finding a way to address when we can and when it makes sense to do it. So I asked that question for just some sort of a base level, sort of, you know, beginning to think about, what are we gonna do with our unimproved roads?
Sure. Good question, and obviously a difficult one, but I think the, probably a good upcoming opportunity to at least talk about that will be when the council subcommittee of Betty, George, and Jennifer, who are looking at street assessment policy. In large part, it's about the apportionment of costs, so whether you get a perfect solution there, at least, I would submit that's an opportunity to broach that topic, anyway.
Okay, thanks.
Just one little add to that is I just think it would be interesting to just talk about, from your professional perspective, what kind of strategy can we use? That's what I want to know. And it may be a long time till we can get them up to what would be the ideal standard, but you're good at problem solving, and a lot of them, we know, are just not acceptable for anybody the way they are. So there may be some kind of strategy that you could suggest.
Sure.
I've got Andrea, and then Alan, and then Chris.
Well, I just want to thank you also for your work and for the work the staff does. So a couple things. I see on this memo that you sent us, or that's gonna be going out tomorrow, that you're gonna be working on Garfield, 6th to 11th Avenue. How much farther up of the intersection at 6th and Garfield are you gonna be going? Because there's some pretty big divots just north of 6th also that are like not that far, it's before the railroad tracks. Are you gonna be going, is that it? I mean, can I encourage you to look at that, too? I mean, because...
Anything that gets done with that this year will just be part of the pothole repair. The 6th to 11th is part of the economic stimulus package of projects. So the rest of it obviously needs to be done from 6th all the way up to Rosemont.
I go on that piece, I would agree.
Oh, my goodness. And I got a little card, just kind of... So the other thing, I would, you know, hooking onto Mike's request of looking at how an overlay would look, can you also do kind of a tiered approach to that? Because I know a lot of, in the neighbors in my ward, or around Trainsong especially, they don't really want concrete, but, you know, how would it look if you did a disc thing and a gravel? I mean, something even to that level would be an improvement as to the big, you know, to the ponds, and I'm afraid they're gonna find some endangered species in one of these days that are prevalent. And Cross Street really is nice. I came down that road, I've gone down it a couple times, and you guys did a really good job with that.
Good point. And I think as we go, we'll be looking for ways to see what we can do to improve the level of service on the unimproved streets, and how that looks will roll out in subsequent budget processes.
Thank you.
Alan?
So on that, so you mentioned Riverview, which is a great improvement to that street. I mean, it was pothole heaven. And so what did you do there, and how's that different from what you do in, because that was an unimproved street?
Yeah, unimproved with some amount of asphalt penetration, different types of surface maintenance, but mostly potholes. And so that was one of the streets where the rotor mill, the oversized rototiller, so to speak, was brought in, really scarified everything that's there, down to a depth of a foot or so, stabilized the material with essentially a cement additive that gets it to set up. And upon completion, worked with Lane County to have a chip-sealed surface put on the top. So can't recall off the top of my head the cost of that, but pennies on the dollar compared to a, you know, permanent street improvement. And it won't last forever, but in the meantime, it's significantly better than...
Does it reuse what it grinds up?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. And the other one that, speaking of over that part of town, the Highway 99 overpass that goes over the railroad tracks, that is just a, is that our responsibility, that that's a state highway? Is that on any of their lists to do anytime soon?
Not at the moment, although we continue the conversation to see as they have, as they have projects in the community, what it would take to stretch to that one. It was part of unsuccessful tighter grant applications, so we're continually looking for ways to move that up. Just didn't happen to be that one.
And one final question. When do we do concrete on streets? Since I know sometimes there's concrete streets and sometimes it's asphalt.
Depends on which engineer you ask sometimes, but short form is that constructing a new street from concrete is significantly more expensive upfront, significantly less expensive over time, as long as nobody cuts into it. So with the street inventory in Eugene, there are some concrete streets, so those are rehabbed. We look for concrete solutions for that. We also put spot concrete improvements in when it's strategic to do so. The 29th and Willamette intersection, for example, will be put back in as a concrete surface so that we shouldn't have to be back in with that traffic disruption for the rest of our collective lives or careers. So asphalt is the, is the maintenance of choice for overlay work, just on a cost and lifecycle basis.
But on a lifecycle basis, concrete makes more sense, but that means we do a lot less. It's a trade-off.
Yeah, depending on the literature that you subscribe to at a given point in time. Springfield, for example, has had some favorable experience with concrete streets. We've had some favorable experience. You know, we're still at the point with the backlog where we are really trying to save what we have, and if we have a few dollars to spend, we'd like to stretch as far as we can. And then continue looking for opportunities like 29th and Willamette where it makes sense to make a little larger capital investment.
And one more question. Are we doing the pothole SWAT team again this summer where it can go out? If you call in, they can respond.
Pothole Patrol?
Pothole Patrol.
I won't see the dedicated crew, but the response will be the same. That was, that was kind of a get-started process, but now with most of the, most of those types of calls being automated and placed in the system, I think Jeff Langston and his group are pretty much keeping up with the same-day type response in most cases on potholes.
So how do they, how do people call in? What's the number?
682-4800, and...
Report a pothole.
Yeah.
That's the pothole number, 682-4800. Website?
Website.
Yeah, website still has a link on as well.
Under what?
Over the Public Works homepage and report a pothole.
Public Works homepage, okay. Thanks.
Chris, you want to wrap it up?
Yeah. I would want to reinforce kind of what's kind of growing here, is the idea of coming back to us with maybe a little bit more robust conversation about what are our options? What are the kinds of things we could do? I mean, maybe for me and for the community, it's a little bit of a 101, but I think what would be helpful is for us to see graphically what the different kinds of street conditions are and what kinds of treatments they normally warrant, because I don't think there's a good connect between, "My street looks like this, and this is what you need to do to it," or "My street looks like that, and this is what you should do." That really governs how extensive you need to be, on 18th is the perfect example versus another street that just gets a seal. The pothole situation is interesting in that how you repair the pothole really determines how cost-effective that repair was. And I'm thinking of, for example, on Bethel Drive, they came out right after the rains ended and fixed some of the potholes A, and fixed some of the potholes B, and the B repair washed out with the very next rain. And so you say, is that a good use of the money to put a pothole repair in, just have it wash out with the very next rain, versus the A kind of repair, which is actually lasting a little bit longer? It's helpful to know A versus B, what the benefits are versus the cost. I think that not only helps us, but it may also, by association, help a broader audience because I think that information absolutely has to get out. And so I think in educating me, it might be helpful for the rest. When I was in DC last month, there were some potholes in front of Union Station that you could have dropped a child into and they couldn't have gotten back out again. So these are enormous problems all over the country. They were craters, yeah. And they could take the axle out of your car.
Well, I would just say that my experience is, in the short run, that Kurt and Eric are very good at giving you a little short blurb that you can use to, in general, respond to people, why do you make the choices that you make? And we should all probably just keep it on our, on our computers to use on a regular basis because mostly people are very, really good at understanding what cost savings really is and the best use of our resources. And they get to saying, "Oh, I get it," pretty, not that they're happy, but they have a better understanding pretty fast. So thank you, everyone, and good meeting.